This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 13th. Please stand for our invocation led by Minister Antonio Carson and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as once again we come thanking you for another day, Father, that you have made, Father, where we choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we just pray that your Holy Spirit leads this meeting today, Father. Father, we also just asking the blessings, Father, on our mail. Father, we asking the blessings from our student, uh, city council members, Father, and all the rest of the Mobile city staff, Father, Mobile County staff, Father. Father, we just pray, Lord, and lift this agenda up to you today. Lord, that you will continue to order our steps, Father, in your will and your way, Father, so that we can be, we can give you all the glory and all the praise, Father. And Father, we pray that at, at, at the end of the day, Father, we come together and remain on one accord, Father, united as a city of Mobile. We thanking you for all that you do, Father. We thanking you for who you are, Father, and we thanking you for, for doing what you do best, and that's be God. Father, we just give you all the praise and honor and glory, in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Nice to see this crowd. We have some special guests in our audience today. These young men who are wearing the colorful ties that are sitting in this row, we'll introduce coming up. But thank you all for coming this morning. It's good to see everyone in attendance. Something that you may have already heard about, but is really great news for the area and in particular, a family from McGill Tulane High School, and that is Bubba Thompson. Everybody heard about Bubba Thompson? Yeah, he was drafted in the first round of the Major League Baseball Draft, the only person from Mobile to ever be drafted first round, right out of high school. So that is quite an achievement and something we should all be proud of. It was great seeing that on TV, just watching the reaction and, you know, what, what a great kid and family. He was committed to play for Alabama, so Alabama's loss is the Texas Rangers game. So congratulations to Bubba and his family. Some things coming up in the area, we always have a lot going on in our city, but the Gulf Coast Herb Society's Annual Tomato Tango, which celebrates the tomatoes, of course, at Market in the Park is coming up. You can enjoy tomato sandwiches and herbal spreads, herb cookies, tea, all sorts of things, and it all benefits the Gulf Coast Herb Society's Herb Garden at the Mobile Botanical Gardens. So the annual Tomato Tango Gulf Coast is June 17th, then it's at Market in the Park, Cathedral Square, of course, that's free. And then speaking of markets in the park, the one at Loretta Park on Old Shell Road is still running through July 27th, and they run from 3 until 6:00 PM. So that's Loretta Park on Old Shell Road, the other Market in the Park. I mentioned, we do have these special visitors. They are the Kappa Knights from Phillips Prep. Gentlemen, stand up, if you would. We had an opportunity to take some photos with the, with the guys who were here today, so we thank you so much for coming, and I think the mayor may have a few words to say about your visit as well, so thank you so much for being with us today. We hope you enjoy being in the audience as well as visiting with some of our folks.
Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Richardson?
I just want to say that Philip, Philip Prep, is one of our finest schools in the city and is located in the heart of District One. Just wanted to get that straight.
I was wondering where it was located. We continue making improvements citywide. You can't help but see those orange cones all around the city, and of course, that means progress. So we want to talk about that a little bit, thanks to our capital improvement plan and the funds which were derived from the extra one cent sales taxes making this possible. Today, we have a contract for drainage work at Schillinger Road and Airway Park Drive. We have building repairs and improvements to the Mobile Public Library Administration Building. We also have an agreement between the city and University of South Alabama for a lighting project on Mobile Street, and we're reallocating some funds for work on sidewalks on Dolphin Island Parkway. We also want to remind you about our June 27th off-site meeting, that will be the last off-site meeting that we hold here during this term. It will be at Burrows Elementary School, 6:00 PM, that is in District Four. We will hold our pre-conference meeting here, as usual, at 9:00 PM upstairs on the ninth floor. And before I close, we have another special announcement to make today. There is a young lady, and I call her a young lady because she's pretty much my age, who, that's telling on myself, but she is a reporter at WALA, Fox 10, here in Mobile, and she's announced her retirement. It's hard to believe in this day and time that anyone stays in the media at one station for 40 years, but that's exactly what Renee Diles has done. Renee has just recently announced that she's retiring and going on to bigger and better things, and so we at the council just wanted to chime in and wish her the very best in retirement. So from all of us here at the council, Renee, we wish you
Congratulations!
And happy trails. Now, the rules of the council are very simple. We just ask everyone, if you would please, turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication that it's time to begin wrapping up your comments. If you have questions or concerns, please address those to me, I'm the chair, and I'll ask the appropriate member of the administration or the council to try to resolve that for you at that time. Again, we welcome you all here this morning. Good to see you. Thanks very much.
Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Small.
And we have recognized the Kappa Knights, but we also have in the audience the Kappa Leaders. Will you all please stand too, with the advisors of Dr. Carr Cunningham and Mr. Joseph Robertson.
Actually, I meant for you all to all stand at the same time and be recognized as a, as a group in total, so thanks to Mr. Small for letting us know that you guys are the leaders, and we certainly can see why. Thank you so much for being here with us today. Y'all look great. All right, Ms. Lambert?
Approval of minutes of June 6th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, for the gentlemen of the Kappa League, this is definitely y'all's morning, because at this time, I would ask y'all to please approach the podium with Carl Cunningham and, uh, face the city council, if you would, please. Gentlemen of the Kappa League. Now, obviously, this is not the entire group of the Kappa League, uh, and so the, the gentlemen that are here with Carl Cunningham are just representatives that could be here today, but I have a proclamation that I would like to read on their behalf, but I would like to tell you before reading the proclamation, that of the 22 seniors that are involved in the Kappa League program that graduated this year, they received $12 million in scholarships.
Wow.
Let's give them a big round of applause. While I'm making my remarks to Carl, thanking him for his mentoring of this group of young men, I know that you don't do it by yourself, so on behalf of the administration and all the city council, please tell everyone involved that we are grateful for what you're doing to put these young men on a pathway to success. Having said that, the certificate of achievement reads, "The Elite Chapter of the Mobile Kappa League is hereby officially thanked and recognized for their educational, occupational, and social guidance to young men in the city of Mobile done on this 13th day of June in the year of our Lord 2017 and the 315th year of the founding of the city of Mobile, proclaimed by William S. Simpson, the mayor." Congratulations.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We want to first thank Mayor Simpson, the city council, for this opportunity to be here, to represent, um, the city, and also Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, which mentors these young men in our program. Uh, we work very hard and very diligently to make sure that each young man that enters our program go on to a career as well as seek some type of higher education and training. Uh, we follow these young men as they enter in ninth grade until they're married and into their professional lives, and so my advisors that are here, Mr. Joseph Robertson and other men of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity that are present, uh, we spend a lot of time with these young men, and, um, success and excellence is what we expect for each young man that enters our program, and as a result, we've, um, seen these young men go on to be outstanding young men, not only in Mobile, in the state, but throughout the world. Thank you.
Would you, well, introduce these, uh, young men who were with you?
Absolutely, they can introduce themselves.
Oh, that's even better.
Hey, my name is Paul Lockett. I am the president of the Mobile Kappa League, and I just want to say, everything that Carl does and the rest of the advisors do for us is very rigorous and it's hard work, but it's something that really pushes us to be better than we would have ever been if it wasn't for this. And I'm at Murphy High School going into my senior year.
All right.
Good morning, my name is Bridgette Horace. I attend Blunt High School, and I will be a 10th grader.
Um, good morning, my name is William Ferguson. I attended Murphy High School, but I am a graduating senior, and I will be attending the University of Southern Miss.
Good morning, my name is Stajion Tramel. I am the secretary of the Elite Chapter Mobile Kappa League, I attend Baker High School, and I am a rising junior.
Very good. So nice to meet you all, thank you.
Thank you.
And great job.
Thank you.
One more round of applause. Thank you.
Okay, the next item, uh, at this time, I'd ask Rick Frederick, Don Bates, and their contingent, uh, to please come to the podium. You know, Mobile, we have declared a war on litter, and as many of you know, we have, um, not just organizations, but individuals that do things, uh, that sometimes go unnoticed. Every now and then you hear us talk about somebody that picks up trash, uh, and they do it along their street or along some corridor, which we're tremendously grateful for. We're certainly grateful for what NEP does, and that's the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program, trying to make sure that our waterways are clean. Not long ago, I had an opportunity to go to the end of Maple Street. Now, many of you probably have not been to the end of Maple Street, but there's a tributary there, uh, that seems to gather a whole lot of trash, uh, that, that's just part of the runoff, and what I saw was pretty surpri-, uh, amazing. And so I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'll tell you what was so amazing about what we saw. Whereas the city of Mobile boasts beautiful rivers, creeks, and tributaries where Mobileans may enjoy paddling, fishing, and watching nature, and whereas the city has declared a war on litter in order to preserve these waterways for future generations, and whereas Don Bates of Thompson Engineering, working with the Mobile National Estuary Program, has served tirelessly as a steward of these natural resources, and whereas Don spearheaded a volunteer program to pick up litter and design the Litter Getter, a small stream trash trap that collects up to 90% of new trash dumped into Maple Street Tributary, helping to keep the city waterways clean, therefore, now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th mayor of the city of Mobile, on behalf of all Mobileans, do hereby thank and recognize Don Bates and present him with this exceptional citizenship medal with our sincerest admiration. Now, Don had no idea he was getting ready to get this medal. He was fooled or maybe tricked into coming here. And the significance of the Litter Getter, uh, is that when you look at it, what you see of this, the swimming pool noodles that your children or grandchildren use with either rope or cable strung through them to act as the boom to gather the trash, and then there's a ball of wire mesh or a box of wire mesh that he created, and it's full of litter. Now, the city of Mobile has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on our litter traps. The trap, the Litter Getter, Don, I'll let you explain it, but I, my guess is, is other than your labor and your ingenuity and your hard work and trying to empty it, probably it's not over, you know, maybe a hundred dollars, maybe a little more. But anyway, for this, we want to give you this exceptional citizenship medal. Congratulations.
How about that?
Yeah, I'm gonna actually put it on your head there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you want to explain how you came up with that?
Sure. Essentially, I've spent my entire childhood playing in the ditches around Manchac, Louisiana, and I've never figured out ways to have fun playing with litter, playing, catching these, so we're vindicated in our lives with catching crawfish in the ditches. It's a frustrating thing when you spend a lot of hours cleaning up these waterways, and after three rain events, it looks just like it did after all that effort. Roberta, the NEP, has a lot of leadership. We did a cleanup, 200 bags of trash, just to clean 200 yards of the Maple Street Tributary up. We've been talking about the Litter Getter, Roberta said, put it out. Denise Rosemary with the city met with us, they opened, they said, let's give it a shot. Uh, we put that out in October. Since that point, we've over 200 pounds at that side of floating litter collected. We've since cleaned up the rest of that tributary, all the way to One Mile Creek, and literally to go clean up after a rain event now, past the Litter Getter, we're picking up a five-gallon bucket of trash. So it shows these little steps can go to a longer, you know, and really clean it up. The big picture is the vision that Mobile has, these little steps really are nice as part of the cumulative effort of a, of a strong vision that the city is doing. That, that's rewarding for anybody out there doing little things, because you know it's part of the greater good, and we're actually making, uh, big leaps forward. So, I wasn't really prepared to say, right? But, um, it's just exciting, and we're actually springboarding this one site. We have grants out for Foley, we took another one in Pritchard, another four or five, doing EPA, EPA grant, working with NEP and Partners for Environmental Progress. The goal is to keep putting these out, we're trying to figure out some of the, the deals and, you know, how we're going to go forward, but, um, and we're 90% effective, including an alligator attack. We have a 10-foot alligator that hangs out at this Litter Getter. So, the key is, we're really, the vision that we're getting from Mobile, and I've spent, ever since I was a child, in, in Mobile, and these diamonds, these greenways that people are coming to now, and the care we're putting in, the investment that the city's putting into those, makes these efforts really important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
I would, I would just like to commend you for the work you're doing. We have, I think by anybody's estimation, a litter problem in the city of Mobile, and it's not going to be corrected, uh, by any one initiative. My experience, after picking up a lot of litter, is that 80% of it is discarded food and beverage containers, and that's coming out of people's cars. Until we can get people to stop allowing that stuff to get out of their cars, it's going to be incumbent upon the rest of us to pick it up. And, uh, the city can only do so much. I think citizen-initiated efforts like yours are critical to the effort. Uh, there are a number, uh, in, in my district, there are a group of ladies who meet once a week to walk along the streets and picking up litter, but these citizens-initiated efforts like yours and like others are, are critical to our ability, uh, to address this issue, and hopefully, over time, we can convince people to stop throwing it out of their cars. Thank you.
Thank you, and we certainly can tell that you are passionate about this, and we thank you and Thompson Engineering for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
And good to see you too, Rick.
And I'm gonna leave the council with a, uh, the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program in partnership with the state of Alabama, the conservation of natural resources. We do a newsletter twice a year, many of y'all maybe already be on the mailing list, but if not, you can get on there, and we've got a full article about the Litter Getter and the efforts that the NEP and Pep and Don and Thompson and others have been working on in this issue, as well as some other, uh, work being done in Three Mile Creek and all around the bay on environmental things. So I'll leave these with you guys. And if anybody wants to get on our mailing list, you can go to the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program website, uh, and you can view the newsletter there and there's a place that you can submit your mailing address. Thank you guys very much.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last week, midweek, I had an opportunity to travel to San Francisco to tell the story about the great things going on in Mobile. Uh, we were specifically targeting, um, and trying to understand their entrepreneurial startup, uh, how they've been so successful in San Francisco. Our trip was on the heels of a trip where eight or 10 venture capitalists, uh, startup, entrepreneurs had come to Mobile and asked us to come meet some of their friends and learn more about their success story. The trip was very, very timely, uh, as we were being introduced to various individuals, and we were, uh, able to share the story that Amazon had recently chosen to come to Mobile, that was like, all of a sudden, you could see the light go on in Mobile, I mean, in their minds, saying, why is Amazon choosing Mobile, and it's somewhat like, uh, the same phenomenon that occurred when Airbus chose Mobile. But we had an opportunity to meet with Google Ventures, Lyft, which is the competition to Uber, Weebly's, which teaches people how to build their own websites, Remix, which is optimization of bus routes, NASDAQ Entrepreneurial Center, plus several more. Uh, it's amazing how forthcoming everyone was with how they had achieved success, and it's amazing that, uh, that they were willing to be so forthcoming, but I sense going forward that we will have an opportunity to partner with them in some form or fashion, because they understand that our quality of life in Mobile is different than the quality of life, and the cost of living is different than it is in San Francisco. So we're real hopeful that we will be able to, uh, create this, uh, a vibrant entrepreneurial startup culture in Mobile, just as we have the aviation cluster that's, uh, being built. I'd also say that, that it was a huge opportunity personally for me to be able to meet Willie McCovey, uh, one of our Hall of Famers, who came to the Giants ballgame, and when you walk around a Giants stadium with Jake Peavy, uh, you're in the presence of a rock star, and, uh, it's pretty amazing. So we are very fortunate to have a friend in Jake that opens the doors for us. Uh, the only disappointing thing about the trip was, was that we thought we were going to have an opportunity to meet Willie Mays, uh, but he is not in the best of health, and he did not make it to that game, but that would have been, uh, a real amazing opportunity to, uh, met Mr. Mays. On another item, yesterday, 250 young people began, uh, job training, uh, in the city of Mobile, um, so we're real excited about that. Actually, I will be leaving to go meet with all of them shortly after, uh, partway during the, uh, this meeting. Today, at Bishop State, and we have the 14 and 15-year-olds beginning the job, uh, the summer job skill program. It's a full-week program that focuses on job skills and community engagement. Uh, the youth, but our youth between the ages of 16 and 24 will begin training for the Summer Youth Employment Program at Three Circles Church, uh, to prepare them for their summer positions with the city of Mobile. Uh, the University of South Alabama Hospitality and Workforce Innovation Alliance is providing the Workplace Readiness Program, uh, that have been selected for these programs, uh, the hospitality, in the hospitality industry in Gulf Shores. Uh, all of them, upon completion of this training, will receive certificates of, um, of having graduated from the hospitality training, and this is all in an effort to empower our youth for success, and it's just another step that we're taking to try to make sure that we put them on a pathway to being successful. Glad to be a part of that, and glad to be the collaborator and initiator of it. Anitra Henderson, who's sitting here to my left, is also calling upon the community to help us establish YES Zones. Uh, YES Zones are places and spaces which will ensure our young people have access to a space where they can learn, grow, and thrive, and she will be here after this, if you would like to come down and find out more about it, or you can call my office and ask for Anitra, and she'll give you how you can participate in that program. So, Anitra is making a great deal of progress, uh, very transformative in how we're approaching our young people, so we thank her for that. So, Madam, uh, Madam President, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor. Ms. Lambert?
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for away with the noise ordinance on June 24th, um, Duval and Michigan Avenue, June 24th on Marine Street, and June 17th on South Durbin Street.
So move.
Discussion on these appeals, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 251 North Pine Street, 311 Clay Street, 602 Young's Alley, 306 North Ann Street, 1262 Adams Street, 1051 Tolman Court, 305, oh, that's it.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these hearings to fix costs for demolition, please come to the podium. Yes, sir?
This is State, uh, 3519 Keeling Road.
Yes, sir, and your name?
Oh, that's the, that's the, um, that's the next group, uh, or in number paired or demolished.
Okay, they'll, they'll be coming up next.
Stay close.
Yeah, stay close. Anyone who would like to speak to any of these that are fixing the cost for demolition? All right, if not, then that public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to determine if the structures at 305 Carson Street, 2009 Carson's Court, 1620 St. Stevens Road, 416 Driver Street, 962 Bernice Hudson Drive, and 3519 Keeling Road are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
Okay, this is a public hearing to determine if these structures are public nuisances and then order them either repaired or demolished. So, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, good morning.
I just wanted to state, uh-
Could you give us your name and address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My name's Sharon Allen, uh, 3519 Keeling Road, that's my address, and the house caught fire, and not long after that, I had a motorcycle accident, and I'm just now getting back to Mobile and to work. I'm gonna demolish the house, but I just didn't have the means to do it at the time.
Okay, and which house are you?
3519-
Last one. Okay. What this is, uh, is just to determine whether it's a nuisance and order it repaired or demolished, so I think you were singing David Dogg and Boss' tune up there. Uh, David, wave your hand, because we are more than happy for you to do what you want to do, um, so if you don't mind, just get with David and go over some of the details with him, and, uh, we are happy to work with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, in the audience who would like to speak to any of these structures? All right, public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Albert Terry.
Albert Terry, 805 East Street, Africa Town, 36610. Hope y'all don't mind me talking really fast, I have a lot of stuff to cover. Uh, today, on the first anniversary of the shooting of Michael Moore, um, in the midst of this supposed age of accountability and transparency from our police department, uh, I'm here to speak on how that transparency and accountability largely does not exist. So I got a couple of things to cover. First, on a, on an incidence of, uh, of, uh, racial profiling that I personally witnessed back on April 18th, I was attending a one-year-old's birthday party at Langen Park when two officers, Unit 440, who was named Corporal Clark, and Unit 442, who was named Officer Robinson, they pull up in their cars and began searching two red cars nearby this party I'm at, and, uh, the officers approached these cars, pointing their guns, you know, using tactical maneuvers, and both of them are standing less than 100 feet away from two different children's birthday parties. Uh, now, a friend at the party I'm standing at, I stay far away, of course, uh, he went to ask them what they were doing, to which they responded, they received a port of a, of a quote, "black male with spiky hair" inside of a red car with- a quote, "black male with spiky hair inside of a red car with a gun." Now, a couple of things wrong with this. For one, these officers did not take the time to verify the presence of this weapon or the person allegedly holding the weapon. Secondly, if there was a gun, it's not illegal to carry a gun inside the car. And correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I understand, you don't even need a permit to do this. So despite these facts, these two officers come up ready to shoot whoever it was they're looking for, you know, despite the fact that this person's not in violation of any laws. They hear a report of a black man with a gun and just lose it. They come out there ready to shoot, giving no heed to this person's right there on a gun, giving no heed to dozens of civilians, including several small children standing nearby. I feel lucky that there was nobody in either of those cars when they came up. I also feel lucky that these officers didn't turn around and see me, a black male with somewhat spiky hair, standing about, excuse me, standing about 50 feet away. I'm not confident that I would have made it home safe that night if that had been the case. Initially, I had more to speak on, but I'm not gonna have time. So other thing I want to address is the Mobile Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council, which is a body that is supposed to exist to be improving relations between police and the public, but from which my, but from my own personal experience, is hardly accessible to the public. I say that because it took me a week, a whole week, to find contact info for anybody on this particular, on this council for several reasons. For one, there's no contact info for anybody on this body or for the body itself listed on the city of Mobile public website. I dug through it thoroughly, I promise you. Secondly, when I went to city offices to find out how to reach them, nobody seemed to know where to send me or even what the Mobile Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council was. Went to the city clerk's office. It wasn't the city clerk I talked to directly, but I went to the city clerk's office and after explaining what it was I was looking for, they sent me to the police headquarters. Police headquarters told me to contact the mayor's office. The mayor's office told me to contact the police headquarters. The police headquarters told me to contact the mayor's office until I told them that the mayor's office was who sent me to them. So I tried to call my city councilman, Mr. Manzi, he happened to be out of town that day. But finally, after several minutes waiting for someone at the city council's office, they managed to dig up a phone number for a chair of that body, Dr. Claude Warren, and he gave me a phone number for the person over my district, Thomas Nelson, who prefers the name Schoolboy. They had an incorrect number on file for him when I asked at the city council office for that number. So Schoolboy actually intended to speak today on his feelings on his council, on a, on an incident of profiling that he experienced, and also on a stop and frisk incident that he had to intervene in himself to stop. But he was, he wasn't allowed to speak today. And seeing as there's nothing in the ordinance establishing this council that prevents his members from speaking publicly about it, I think I know why he was forbidden from speaking. Our guess is because, you know, he's very critical of the committee and finds it to be largely ineffective because it doesn't have any real legal mandate to demand information or transparency from the police department. And to that end, Schoolboy says that the department regularly withholds information requested by the council, especially when it comes to complaints about lack of use of body cameras from the Mobile Police Department, which I can personally attest seems to happen very rarely outside of, outside of Government Plaza, of course. So I would add to that by saying that the city council, at least not all of you seem to be sincere about promoting police accountability. Otherwise, our own councilwoman, Bess Rich, would not be a member of a Facebook group titled "Herald Hurst Presumed Innocent." This page was formed a few days after Mike Moore's shooting by one Joseph Rusty Johnston, a former Mobile County Circuit Judge, who retired amidst an ethics investigation into his erratic behavior and has lately been known to espouse some strong pro-confederate views. Now, when Rich joined, it's public now, but when Rich joined, okay, I'll wrap up.
Go ahead. Yeah. Wrap up.
So I say, I'll just say it's been a year and no progress has been made, you know? We shouted, we marched, we demanded answers, and we didn't get answers. All we got is more secrecy, more smoke and mirrors, more cover-ups, more bullshit.
Mr. Terry.
So I'm here to say...
Mr. Terry, your time is up and we don't appreciate that kind of language in our, in our audience. So please go ahead and take your seat.
All right. Well, y'all will be hearing from me very soon.
I'm sure. Go ahead and have a seat. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do want to make a couple of comments. You signed in by Thursday ahead of time, just like our rules ask you to do, as did some other folks who were here to speak today. I was contacted by the members, or some members of the Police Citizens Advisory Committee because they wanted to speak as well, but they did not meet our rules guideline. And because of that, I said, no, I'm not going to allow you to speak as other members or other people do because they signed up ahead of time, you did not. However, we do have some members who are here in the audience. I asked them to come in case there were some questions that they could answer, like when are the meetings and what do you do and that sort of thing. So, so they are here and we may have some questions for them coming up. Ms. Lambert.
Madam President.
Mr. Small.
I would like to ask a question to the administration. Have they heard about this April 18th incident at Langen Park before today?
Yeah. What was the date on that?
17.
17.
17. I think I heard.
It's April 18th.
18.
Oh, I thought you said 17.
It was April 18th that you reported it to the police department anonymously?
Yeah, on April 18th.
Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to get the date. We got that right. April 18th, correct?
Okay. Chief?
To my knowledge, we have no report on that, but we do have Internal Affairs here today. If they're interested in filing a report, a follow-up report to that, we'll initiate an investigation into that incident because we do have somebody available to take, take that today.
Okay.
Madam President.
Mr. Small.
I would like to ask, chief, as possible, if you can inform the council, the whole council, city council, if you have any documentation of the April 18th incident, you know, if there, you know, if any.
At this time, I don't have any information in relation to it.
I'm just saying if it is.
But once we, I get back to the office, have an opportunity to look and see if there was an anonymous report filed, I will notify the council and the mayor at that time.
All right. Thank you.
And I do want to also give another update. We have spoken the last couple of weeks about the need to have an update from our Police Citizens Advisory Council. They've been in operation for some months now and they have been holding meetings around the city. I hate that it's hard to find out where they're meeting. The way things are these days with media, it's very difficult to get the word out. We put it in our newsletters. We send out news releases, but I understand that not everybody gets the information. So we will be holding a Public Safety Committee meeting with our Police Citizens Advisory Council to go back over what their mission is, what the goals are, when the meetings are, just to provide the council an update because we understand there have been some issues and we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and working toward the goal that we established them to do. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Let me just say that there has been a national complaint that, and minority communities, that the method and tactics in policing is different from what it is in majority community. And I hope that the citizens out there are listening to me because that may be true. And I believe the reason is, is this silence. Is that you don't report. When the police is policing a neighborhood where they know the citizens want to report on them, do you think they're going to misbehave? I tell you not. But if they are in an area that they know you're not going to report, they're more likely to do what they want to do. If you want to stop it, report it. What we just heard from the police chief, he has no report. Now, that's, the rest of it is hot air unless, because you can't act unless you get a report. Telling Tom, Dick, and Harry, it's not going to help. Report it. Make an official report. And wait until you get your official answer, then you act if you don't like the outcome. But just telling somebody else, Charlie last night, the police stopped me, unless you make an official report, it is unofficial and nobody's going to act. If you want to stop it, report it.
And we do have two members of the Police Citizens Advisory Council who are here today. I know you've got some meetings coming up. When's the next one?
July 15th.
July 15th. Is that the one at Moore Library? I know there's one coming up in my district at Moore Library. I thought it was the 13th, but we'll...
13.
Okay. The 13th at Moore.
Two days later.
And then two days later, another one. Okay. Our office does send out news releases and we put it in our newsletters, but we need some help getting the information out. I know the police department is putting it on, I think, in their newsletters or on Next Door Neighbor, I'm not sure, but we need to do a better job publicizing this.
Would you give us the address where it's going to be on the 13th?
It is the Moore Library on Old Shell Road. I don't have the exact street address.
McGregor.
Well, yes, I'm sorry. McGregor Avenue. It's the city's Spring Hill Moore branch of the library. They have a meeting room there. So it'll be at 6:00 or 6:30.
Right, right next to Spring Hill Baptist Church.
Yeah. Yeah, but we'll put that out again. It'll be in my newsletter and everybody else's newsletter. And then Marion will send out a news release. And we'll make sure that it gets into the police department's website and Next Door Neighbor and all of those.
Yeah, there's one August, I want to say the 10th, at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, which will be for District 6's area.
Okay. Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to first ask my appointee to this committee, Mr. Thomas Schoolboy Nelson. Do you mind standing? Noted man in the community. It was referenced that someone may have told you not to speak in today's meeting. Did anyone from the city instruct you not to speak in today's meeting?
No.
I just wanted to clear that so everyone is understood that I have given him the freedom he needs to represent me and this district on this panel. He has not been obstructed. He has not been hindered. There's been no procureance put before him to speak freely as to how he sees things relative to the inner workings of that panel. And I thank you for, thank you for your service. I just wanted to say that.
To straighten that out, it was not the city council. It was the word to our chairman. Let us know that we have not officially signed up.
Right. That's, yeah. That was exactly what I mentioned. Yeah.
I was out of town at 13. So I couldn't sign up, so that's why I couldn't.
Well, we appreciate you coming and being here. And again, thank you for your service. I know everybody on this council appreciates it because you were all volunteers doing this and we know it takes a lot of time and effort. So thank you very much. Mr. Manzi, you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was the first thing. The second thing I want to make certain is this, whether I'm in Mobile, out of the country, in the city, out of the state, I have two cell phones. Two, well, they're not full for residents of District 2. My number is 251-509-4239. I have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. In other words, I'm not running from citizens of District 2 when they have issues. I'm here. Second, third, I'd like to request of this administration to, as quickly as possible, create something on our city website that lists the names of these individuals and with their permission, their contact information or a central mode of contact so that citizens have some way of communicating with this body, some mailing address. So if you want to anonymously report an incident, that it can be received. Some central number if they don't feel comfortable releasing their personal numbers. Where if there's an incident that needs to be brought before the committee, that citizens in this community will have an opportunity to directly speak with this body within the confines of the ordinance that we passed. If, if, it will never be effective if there's this disconnect between citizens and the panel. If they don't know how to reach you, you don't know how to reach them. And, and there are many instances where there might be something someone might want to report and they don't want their name associated with it. If there was an email, if there was a mail address, if there was a number where people could call and communicate, I really believe some of this that we've heard today could be, could be remedied.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that we try to schedule a committee meeting, you know, as soon as possible to address some of the issues that, that have been coming from the advisory committee and some of the issues that were brought out this morning from the citizens. I think we need to have a meeting as soon as possible, committee meeting.
Yes. We, we, we talked about that at our pre-conference meeting and Mrs. Rich is the Public Safety Committee Director and she will be calling a meeting to combine with the Police Citizens Advisory Council. So we'll be looking at some dates that are convenient for everybody.
If I could just...
Mrs. Rich, go ahead.
I know we've talked as a council to come up with our own page for not just this board, but many boards that people want to interface with. And I would certainly look forward to having that available to people so that they know when they're clicking on the city's website, they can then click over to the city clerk and city council because we are the communication tool as far as outreach is with, like I said, not just this particular board that's busy and volunteer, but we do library, we do everything. So again, that's why we appoint citizens that are engaged and want to interact and be part of the community. So again, I would urge Dogwood or whoever is managing the city's website to work with the clerk's office. And every time I ask about it, it's been going on for a long time, I'm told or close it's going to happen. So we could even use the phone number of the city clerk's office to be the conduit. And that way, that's a very public number. They could take the message, get in touch with the committee chair or whomever is designated for, again, any board that we have these outreach for. And it would be something that, again, I'm just waiting for the website to contain this information for the citizens of Mobile.
Okay. We, we have been working on a general email address for the Police Citizens Advisory Council so that people will have an email that they can send into and putting all the information out there. So that is certainly in progress. And the clerk's office is working hand in hand with our PR person, Marion Steinfeld, as well as Charlotte over at the police department. So we want to make it as easily accessible as pro, as possible. You know, we're, we're still working on this and making some tweaks and trying to make it work for everybody, but that is certainly the goal. And as soon as we get a date for this meeting, we'll get up with you all to, to make sure that it's convenient. Yes, sir? Did you have something?
Robert Adams, I was asked to serve as secretary on the police advisory council. I will guarantee that a summary, not necessarily minutes, but a summary will get back to you.
All right. Great.
As the council with comments. And I need to say, we ask for problems, but good things that are happening and we, we get both. To answer your question, I will, I will work, if you assign a staff person to work, I will work with them. Our failing is communicating to the citizens that we are having a meeting. So I will, I will be happy to work on that. If there's a person with press release getting it out, I, I know that not everyone looks at the website or what's coming up. We've had some, some poor attendance and I'd really like to see that. One comment was made is they would like to see a meeting with young parents. And even though I don't, I, I'm representative of the mayor, I would like to see one that covers the entire city where we can invite everyone but say this is particularly for young parents because they have particular needs with schedules.
Great. We look forward to that. Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else?
Also, they can go to the city council's Facebook page for information regarding the meetings that are scheduled with the police advisory council.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. We, we do have a city council Facebook page that provides the information as well. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
Glenda Wright, Alton Ball and Grittanian Wright.
Hey, my name is Alton Ball. Born in Mobile, Alabama.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
My name is Alton Ball. Born in Mobile, Alabama, but I live in Gulfport, Mississippi.
Live where now?
Gulfport, Mississippi.
Gulfport, Mississippi.
Okay.
On Joe Kane Sunday at the Mardi Gras, Saturday, at the Mardi Gras, I was, I got into an altercation with a police officer. I was, me and my cousin were standing in front of the McDonald's, talking to the police off, well, we wasn't talking to the police officer. The officer came up and slung a guy down by his jacket. I told my cousin, I was like, they did that boy wrong. The officer saw, heard that I said that and he came up and said, no matter how... The officer saw, heard that I said that, and he came up and said, no matter how we get him down, no matter how we do it, as long as we get him out the way of other citizens. So, as he was talking to us, another officer came up and approached us and asked, did we have a problem? And I said, no. He said, F you, B, I'm not talking to you. So I was like, what? He said it again. My cousin grabbed me and said, let's go. As we walked off, the officer came behind me and tackled me, put me on the ground, and as I was on the ground, they were slinging my head against the ground. And when I got to the car, I asked him, I was, I said, are y'all gonna look at my face? He shined the light on my face and said that, uh, it was nothing wrong, it was not bad. I had a big scar on my face, it was bleeding, it was dripping, and when I got to the, in the car, as I was being transported to, um, Strickland, I asked the officer, I was like, are y'all required to wear body cameras? Officer that was transporting me said it was optional. And when we got to the youth center, I asked the lady that was booking us, and she said it was optional. And after we went and filed charges against the officer, that, no, next day, we went back to the Mardi Gras, me and my cousin was passing by, the same two officers came and they frisked me and my cousin for no reason. They asked us, they said, don't pass by McDonald's no more, no come around here no more. And when we was booked, getting booked, they asked us, they said, uh, we got three to five business days to contact you. We don't contact you, nothing will happen past this. After those three to five days, we went and filed complaints to Internal Affairs about the police officers. After we filed complaints against the police officers, that's when the, we went and found out that they had pending charges against me for, um, disorderly conduct. So, now, I got caught in the morning for disorderly conduct, and I feel that it wa- is unnecessary when I didn't do anything. I feel like, if anything, the officer was disordered to me. He cursed me out, I didn't say anything wrong to him, I was just briefly telling my cousin that they did this man wrong. Last year during the summer, I was in Sacramento, California, working for the city hall. I was, um, working with the police officers as a intern job. While I was working with the police officers, I was learning about the law and I was basically following my career as a police officer. Well, now that I know that police officers, well, not all police officers, but Mobile police officers that I've came in contact with are not good, I feel like Mo- police is not my career anymore. So, I feel like it's something should be, should happen to these police officers that's doing young men wrong.
All right, I'm gonna ask Chief Batiste if you want to, 'cause you, you said you did file charges, correct?
Yes, ma'am, but after we found out that I had charges, we didn't go any further, we stopped, uh, we didn't go in and do a, um, they asked for a recorded statement, and we didn't go in and do it, so they mailed us the letter, they sent it to my school and said that it was, they canceled it. So, uh, there's no investigation going on anymore.
Okay. Um, since we are not the court and we have not been involved in that, that's really not something for the council to get involved with, I may ask Chief Batiste if you don't mind just addressing the incident and if there's a report that you know about or can go back and look at for, for this family.
Madam President, I will tell you that the family did come down and they did file a report. Uh, we did initiate an investigation. Uh, after a period of time, Mrs. Wright, I think the young man's mother, uh, failed to follow through with our Internal Affairs officers, they have made three attempts to contact her to follow up with, uh, their version of what actually occurred. We interviewed no less than 12 officers, uh, one firefighter, and of course, the family here, but they came in to make the initial report. Uh, the information that, that we were able to determine based off the, our investigation was determined that the complaint that were alleged by the young man at the time was an unfounded complaint. Uh, the actions of the officers were determined to be proper conduct, and so the case was closed because we never had an opportunity to follow up with Ms. Wright. She never returned any of our phone calls, so there is our version of what we were able to determine through our investigation, we were never able to communicate with them to get a different version of what may have, have occurred based off their perception of what occurred. And so, again, the case was closed after a thorough investigation on our end.
Okay.
Chief.
Mr. Richardson?
Chief, in, in reaching your complaint that, um, there was no justi- there was no justification for action toward the officers that they alleged had treated them?
Correct.
Did you consider the video and any of the body cameras?
We considered the video that we had available to us at the time. All officers did not have cameras on on that particular evening, but we did have cameras in the area. Uh, typically during Mardi Gras, we positioned, uh, cameras throughout the area to just kind of make sure that we could see about overview, we looked at, uh, video that was produced by different businesses that may have had, uh, cameras in the area and based at the time that we saw the incident. What initiated the incident in generaling was the fact that the officers received, observed individuals throwing items back at the float. When they came in to make contact, that is when they made contact with Mr. Antoine Ball. Uh, as they came in to make the arrest in relationship to the individuals throwing back at the floats, uh, Mr. Ball engaged them in conversation and wanted to know why they were making the arrest. Subsequently, as I said, you know, he was taken into custody, there were not charges brought against him because they came down to make the, make a report. He was arrested on that particular evening, and the courts summoned him back to the courts. It was not because we signed warrants day later. He was arrested that evening, uh, for the complaint and taken to Strickland Youth Center.
So it was a separate complaint that evening? Or was it the same?
No, it was out of second. He was taken to Strickland, but he was given a court date to return, return back the court, which is typically what happened in, in the youth system sometime. You go down there and they give you a, uh, court date to report.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Manzi?
Uh, a general statement I'd like to make. Uh, one of the reasons that I was a big proponent of these body cameras was to get rid of situations just like this, where you've got one set of facts on this side and one set of facts on this side, and we're not able to determine with any, uh, certainty exactly what happened, which is why we expended, uh, nearly four and a half million dollars on body cameras. Uh, Chief, all, all I'm saying is, is that I, I, it's, it's my expectation for the protection of both the citizen and the officer, that when these interactions occur, there's, this, we, we purchase body cameras, that you, you ought to be able to go back and pull up the date and the time this incident occurred and see exactly who did what, who said what, and it's unfortunate that we're not able to, but that's one of the major reasons why we move forward, uh, with purchasing that system.
If, if I might counsel you?
Yes, sir.
Ha- having a body camera in itself does not guarantee that you will be able to dismiss some of the conflict that exists at this time right now anyway, because even, we've had situations where individuals had body cameras and you were not able to pick up the content, the content of what actually occurred. Why this is hopeful, why this is an unfortunate situation that we're not able to show body camera as it relates to this particular incident, uh, the part that really makes this difficult is the fact the lack of cooperation by the complainant. A co- a complaint without a complainant is not a complaint. If nobody comes in and actually tells their story, and I think that's what Mr. Richardson said earlier today, he said, if you don't come and complain and you don't follow through with the complaint, how can we look at those other things that are necessary for us to make an informed decision about what actually occurred? Usually, you're gonna have three, three outcomes. You're either gonna have it's founded, unfounded, or you're not gonna have sufficient evidence to make a decision. In this particular case, based off the interviews we were able to do without the follow-through and the cooperation of the complainant, we were able to come to a conclusion that it was an unfounded complaint, the action of the officer was proper, and so as a result of that, she received a letter stating that. Now, if she wants to come forward and give some additional information at this point, again, we have IA here today, we can follow through with whatever needs to be done, if there's some new evidence that she has that, that would, would help us in our investigation, we're certainly glad to look at that. But I think that their account of what occurred is not consistent with what we were able to determine at the time that we conducted the investigation.
Chief, I'm, I'm not speaking.
And Mr. Manzi, before you, before you go on, are there any other questions of the family, so that they can take their seats?
No, I actually would like to speak.
Well, we've already had the five minutes, I know there were three of you, but we counted one speaker for the, for the total, you don't get-
We signed up separately.
Well, you signed up as a group, and there was one speaker, and that's how we normally do it.
Really?
Yes.
That's new.
Pardon me?
When I called in, I had to sign my son up, I had to sign Gritarian up, and I had to sign myself. So it was only-
Ma'am, let, let Mrs. Lambert, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
You did sign all, she did sign all three.
That's right, separate.
She stated that she wanted them separated.
Let, let her speak.
All right, that, that's fine, go ahead. Go ahead.
Come on, baby. Let me say hello here.
Um, my name is Gritarian Wright, um, I live in Gulfport, Mississippi.
Yeah, we can't, can't hear you.
My name is Gritarian Wright, and I live in Gulfport, Mississippi. Um, as they was doing that to my brother, I walked up and I saw them doing that to him.
Speak louder, Terry.
I walked up on the police doing that to my brother, and I, like, I was-
In shock.
Yeah, I was in shock, because he don't do anything to nobody, so I, like, blacked out and I just started cursing at the police. So, they took me down too, and that's, I went, I went with them.
I, I didn't hear a word you said, young man, I'm sorry.
It's hard to hear.
Yeah, our, our system is not very good in here.
It's fine, mama got plenty to say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. My name is Glenda Wright, and I am a resident of Gulfport, Mississippi at this time, based off of this incident. Soon thereafter, I am relocated. Okay, and my reasons for doing that, I'm just arriving here from California, my son is attending a Mardi Gras event, he is not expecting this to happen to him, he has worked side by side with law enforcement, he has worked with city council, he knows his proper place, and I refuse to believe that he will engage in an altercation with law enforcement. I refuse to believe that because I know my son, and I also know this child. This child, I know that he will curse and act wild and things of that nature, because he has ADHD as well as PTSD and things that is going on with him mentally. But this child here has never been in any type of altercation, not in the schools, nowhere. He has worked with prestige people in society, he has been raised to be a decent citizen in society, and this is ridiculous for him to have to fight for his freedom from people who has abused him and assaulted him. And for me to have to stand here before a council that has nothing to do with the police department, so you say? I don't believe that you don't have any part in the police department.
Well, that's, that's the truth. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I would like to share this with you. So, poem that I wrote, it's called "Manipulation." You tell me the things I see isn't what it appeared to be, at least that's what you tell me, but I see I'm treated unfairly. Why would you corrupt me? Don't you see I want to be free and this you won't let me be because you treat me so unfairly? Oh, because I'm young and black, I guess I don't supposed to know that, but I'm sorry, this is just fact. What should we do to change that? Draw a weapon and fight back? Then our whole family would be under attack. Why should we have to go through that? It's a fact because we're black. Talk to it like we're still slaves, most of us dig our own graves. I'm tired of living these days because this isn't how we was raised. They put us in this harbor maze for us to escape this phase. For me to lie down, for you to kick me around just because my skin is brown, well, come again because now I'm wrong. Not a child who sits back and moan, but someone who's constantly on the phone, looking for someone who I can call on, but now I see they're all gone. I want you to know that it's not right what is occurring in your city. It's not fair for the racial profiling that pla- takes place in your city. I heard your mayor speak, a war on murder, a war on trash, what about a war on racism? I'm tired of having to stand and fight for what's right, all because of my skin color. And I've been having to do this over at Jane Strickland, being a product of the state. I've been having to do this, being here in this building, fighting for tickets that are not even, uh, legitimate tags that, uh, tags on a car, a, a, a test driven vehicle from a car lot, and I found guilty for a tag. So I do understand that it's a lot of things go on in this city that is not right and is not fair to the people. And if you care anything, if you have any compassion in your heart, you will fulfill your obligation to the people and do something. It's not right. When these young men stand up with these suits on, they're very acceptable. These young men come in here dressed down, they're not acceptable. When the mayor came and gave the, the award to the young men, he didn't stand here and take a picture with them, he waited till these young men came with the trash and stand. I have a problem, and I moved away from where you are to try and get away from it, but I know it's no running. I've been to California, I've been to Texas, I done been all around this place, and you all tend to follow me.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming, and we, we've certainly heard what you had to say.
The chief says he wants to say-
Uh, did you want to say something else, chief?
Not in relationship to that, I do want to go back to the previous complaint you did ask about the, did we receive a complaint, and we did receive an anonymous call, phone call to our dispatchers early on the April incident date. Uh, it reads, it says, uh, "In progress, blackmail in red car, subject had gun and was loading it, subject was putting silencer on gun, subject lives near pavilion, near playground, uh, in passenger seat of vehicle, approximately 16, 18-year-old spiked hair, uh, wearing white shirt, black jacket and khaki pants, uh, no complainant to see, uh, unknown at this time." And so, we were responding to information that we received from dispatch on a particular evening that the gentleman spoke to earlier. Uh, that's what we do, when we get calls, if, you know, people call us, we're gonna respond, that's, that's what we're supposed to do. And so, we responded to a vehicle that, that matched the description, uh, we confronted it, what we believe a person of, of interest at that time, and again, even though it was a playground, it, we, we've had young people get shot on playgrounds and situations like that, so we're making sure we're responding.
Definitely, a lot of people at those parks, on the weekends especially, Wright.
Madam President.
Mr. Richardson?
I'll, I'll close my comment on this by saying, there, there must be validation, there must be validation. If someone come and complain, we ought to have a way to validate the complaint. I don't know of no other way to do it other than body cameras, I don't know of no other way to do it. And, and there, there must be body cameras, and if there is no policy according to the Zogebit Act, the council can establish policy. We need to review the policy on body cameras, and there's not an adequate policy, we need to set the policy. We don't need nobody coming down here telling us about nothing, we can't validate. And body cameras is the tool that we spent almost five million dollars on, so we can validate these complaints and do something about it if it's valid.
Chief, a question of the chief. Hang, hang on a second, chief and Director Barber, when we get our committee meeting together for public safety along with our Police Citizens Advisory Council, could we please relook at the body cam policy and what we are doing, and who's wearing them and who's not, and how you're addressing that?
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can do that.
All right, Mrs. Rich?
Yes, Chief Batiste, I have a question. Um, you looked up the April 18th, and there was a call to 911 that precipitated the police coming out and investigating that complaint, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
But you didn't see anything where somebody then registered a complaint on treatment in response to that?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I, I got everything lined up straight.
If there is an anonymous call, do y'all register those, or how does that work?
Well, well, the call that came into 911 was anonymous, it was not somebody complaining about the treatment at that time, yes. So, we, we'll, we'll still look back and see if there was a, uh, IE complaint where someone called in anonymous, wanted to complain about treatment, but as of right now, I don't have that before me. We worry about pulling the other one.
I thought that's what you said, I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
Madam President. Uh, Mr. Small?
Uh, chief, just one question, um, can you refresh my memory, how many body cameras do we, the city currently have, or the police department currently have, versus the amount of officers that we have patrolling the streets?
Approximately 300. Approximately 300. We have, currently, we have right at 484 sworn officers.
So like 184 body cameras to keep, you know, every officer to have a body camera? We missing what, like 184?
Currently, all of our patrol officers below the rank of sergeant. We're body cameras, our traffic units, our SWAT team. So every one of our officers that are acting in a field operations or daily interaction with the public from receiving calls for service, vehicle stops, things of that nature there, are equipped with body cameras.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam President, I have a question.
Mr. Davis?
And I may have missed this, chief, but going back to the numbers of body cameras, when we, you know, when we go back to the Michael Moore incident, the reason we don't have any body cam footage there was the officer was headed into work and he didn't have body cam until he got to work.
Correct.
So my impression is that we have enough body cams for the officers we have on duty at one time. Or do we have... Let's say the patrol officers, they've served 12-hour shifts, right? And so you got half of them on duty at one time and half of them not on duty. So let's say we have 200 patrol officers on duty at one time. We got 200 cams or do we have 400 cams?
Every officer is assigned his own body cam. It only carries a 12-hour charge. When they complete their 12-hour shift, the unit has to be taken back to the, wherever precinct they're out of and place in a docking station for the data that was recorded during his or her shift to be downloaded so that it can be stored for incidents where we have provided DUI cases, any type of incident that may have occurred. Ultimately, when that officer reports back, and we don't have enough cameras, so to speak, to give everybody a camera to wear 24 hours a day, because I think, you know, when we dealt with the Michael Moore situation, it was about, well, why did the officer not have his camera on as he was reporting to duty? So ultimately, all of our officers that are in patrol, that are below the rank of sergeant, has a camera assigned to them.
Yeah.
So there's not a deficiency in cameras.
Well, that leads me to my next question, which is, at these periods of time like Mardi Gras, where we would have...
Extra officers.
Extra officers on duty. Thank you. Where we'd have extra officers on duty, there's no reason why they shouldn't all have body cams also?
Or aren't there enough?
Since everyone is assigned one, and the only limitation is the requirement that they charge it.
You know, I guess, what I... As we talk about what occurred here, rather than talk about all of the facts involved in that particular case, on that particular evening when the incident occur, or any incident occurs, when the officer have their body cams on...
Yeah, and let me make it clear. I'm not talking about this incident. I'm talking about generally body cams.
Well, that's what I'm trying to speak to. In general, the officers had body cams on on that particular evening. The incident that occurred... Incidents occur so quickly, sometime the officers doesn't hit the button to activate the camera. They don't walk around downtown during Mardi Gras with their body cams on. And sometime incidents occur so quickly that they don't get an opportunity to hit the required button. These incidents occur within a matter of minutes, and it's over with.
Okay.
And it's over with.
I know. Would y'all please? We're trying to listen.
So ultimately, the officers did have cameras on on that particular evening. As I said earlier, there is video of what occurred, but of that particular incident because of, you know, what took place so quickly, you don't have footage of that. And I think I shared that earlier.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Resolutions held over 37, 307 and 37, 308. Recommend an approval to the ABC board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offerings only licensed for Con convenience store and for a lounge retail liquor class two package store license for Con package store on Hockham Avenue.
I'd like to ask that the... I move these be held over for two weeks.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37, 322. Recommend approval to the ABC board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Oysteria, Novio on South Concepcion Street.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21, 332. Authorized contract with John G. Walton Construction Company for Airway Park Drive at Shilohden Road Drainage Improvements.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21, 335. Authorized contract with Douglas Curly for Mobile Public Library Administration Building exterior repairs.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37, 336. Approve the application of Mary Taylor doing business as Elegant Knights Transportation Group for transportation service.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Ms. Taylor, that's... Yeah. I'd like to, when you stand up, just really realize that, really not recognize you with your glasses on. I would like to say that Mrs. Taylor, I have a privilege in know of her in the past two years. Even my back to school events for the last couple of years, she gave and volunteered her time and gave VAP pass. And throughout the community, she had given so much to the mobile area. I'd like to say thank you so much and wish you good luck more with the success of your business.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 27, 337 through 58, 354.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 27, 337 through 58, 354.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
27, 337. Amend list of voting centers for the August 22nd, 2017 municipal election to reflect a change in the voting center for Ward 6-4.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
If I could just comment briefly on this.
Mrs. Rich?
For the city's municipal election, you have to vote not only in your district but in your assigned ward. And this is a location that is not a normal voting location. Out of the four that are in District 6, three are constant voting locations, but this one people will have to pay attention to based on the ward that they're in and the district that they need to vote in. And I know that the city clerk's office will do everything to educate all voters in the city election because it'll be particularly important because the week before is a state election, which are not the same locations. So again, we'll have our work cut out to inform and educate our voter. And I appreciate this one being adjusted in the district because it's better for handicapped, it's... The parking is better, the accessibility is better. So I look forward to that and appreciate the council's support on this change.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37, 338. Recommend approval to the ABC board for issuance of a special retail more than 30 days license for jury in Mobile on I-65 Service Road South.
So moved? Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
43, 30... 43, 39. 340, 341, 42, 43, 44 are fixing the cost of demolition of structures. And 40, 345, 346, 47, 48, 49, and 50 are declaring structures public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
58, 351, 352, 353, and 354 assessing cost removal of weed groups 15, 43, 48, 51, and 52.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 01, 355.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of 01, 355.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01, 355. Authorized agreement with the University of South Alabama to complete the lighting project for Mobile Street.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 09, 356 through 21, 358.
By casual rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
No, we're gonna go ahead and vote.
Go ahead.
We're gonna wait until...
On all of them?
Yeah.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of resolution 09, 356 to 21, 358.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
09, 356. Reallocating monies within Capital Project Move Mobile Youth Initiative from Convention Center Fund to Capital Improvement Fund.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
09, 357. Reallocating monies within Capital Project Dolphin Island Parkway sidewalks into Capital Improvement Fund to Grant Fund.
So moved? Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21, 358. Authorized contract with Simplex rental for sprinkler testing, five-year obstruction.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Just a quick announcement. During the pre-conference meeting, we discussed a finance committee meeting in conjunction with our finance advisory council. Unfortunately, we are going to have to postpone that meeting. We're trying to get the word out. I see Mike Johnson in the audience. We did not send out an official notice, although we did announce it at our pre-conference meeting last weekend this week. But because we didn't send the official notice out, we're going to postpone that, and we're contacting all the members of the council. So we will reset that. Mr. Davis will work with Mr. Wesh and the members of the council to find a convenient date. So we will do that coming up. I will start now with Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. It's good to be back. I look forward, first of all, and I want everybody to be assured that this issue of the use of body cams and when and how we're gonna do better is not a dead issue. If you recall, when we first started talking about this, I commented that the only time we need them is when we didn't have them. And I don't know that that's necessarily the case, but it is the appearance that is And so I asked for the citizenry to be ready to participate. Because this whole council, there's not an exception. Everyone on this council wants this program to work. That is, the body cam program, and as Mr. Manzi put, it protects all parties in every situation. And it is the goal of our police chief, I know his heart, to make sure that we are the best police force that we can be and that this program is maximized. You have the support of the council, chief. You put in the budget, show us where we gotta get the money, and I'm just gonna guarantee you that this council's gonna vote unanimously. We must make this a priority in our city. There's no question about it. And I can see the honesty in the young man's eyes as he walked to our... What he believes is what's important to me at this point. And right now, we just... We have work to do. We know that. We have work to do as a citizenry as well in the way that we interact. I have been known to say things at the wrong time. And when an officer is engaged in his job, in close contact, and is immediately addressed or approached in a manner that is not expected, sometimes our emotions will overcome us. We watched it in a basketball game for all things last night. This wasn't something that was racial. They were in a contest, and their heart rates were up, and a little bitty thing can set things off. So I ask everybody to take a step back. And I know that our chief is gonna do everything that he can to make sure that what we want from our police is what we're gonna get. Please know that. I'm not gonna talk much longer, but I do wanna tell everyone that my time with my son in California at a place called the J. H. Ranch, you can Google that, was absolutely incredible. And I told Ms. Irene that I... She gave me a Bible. It is not my only one, but it was the one that I chose to take to J. H. Ranch with me. And it was well-used. This experience that I had took me away from my normal duties as a city councilman. First time in 10 years that I have not returned calls within 24 hours. And there are some calls that, quite frankly, are not gonna be returned. I am doing my best to return them all, and I'm trying to prioritize them. And if you have not heard back from me, I ask that you please give me another chance to respond to your issue. Some things have been lost in the transition. But I'm glad to be back, and I look forward to this next three or four months as we move toward our municipal election. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. Speaking of body cameras, I'd like to ask you, chief, at the next public safety committee, when we're talking about the body cameras, could you bring to the council what other bigger cities doing like Atlanta, Los Angeles, and Chicago, New York about body cameras and everything? And I think that would be helpful for this council. And I do appreciate the work that you're doing for the city of Mobile. On June 29th, Thursday evening, we will have our District 3-wide community meeting, which would be held at the Fulton Road Baptist Church that is located at 1800 Dolphin Island Parkway at 6 o'clock PM, inviting all the citizens of District 3 to please come out on June 29th. We will be discussing CIPs, also talking about blight and overgrown grass. Again, that will be held on Thursday, June 29th, at 6 o'clock PM at the Fulton Road Baptist Church at 1800 Dolphin Island Parkway. And speaking of overgrown grass, we know we're experiencing a lot of rain, and the sunshine is coming, and grass is going to grow. Many vacant lots are located not only throughout District 3 but throughout the city. We ask that each citizen to please dial 311 and report that particular property that is overgrown. The quicker that you report it, the quicker the city can address it. Again, we're asking you to dial 311 or dial 208-5311. And remember that District 3 is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. This Thursday will be the district-wide meeting at the Connie Hudson Senior Center at 6:30. The topic is public safety. We'll have Chief Batiste from the MPD and Chief Sealy from Mobile Fire Rescue Department and our public safety director, James Barber. They'll be able to give an overview of what's going on and information to share with the community, and there'll be time for questions and answers. On June 20th, we will have a public safety committee meeting. Now, this meeting is organized to talk about the UNTCC. I think I have the initials correct. And that's Ordnance 02019 that the mayor's office, the administration, presented to us. I've asked that anybody involved in the organization of that ordinance, the community at large, of course, the public safety committee, and all council people who want to attend to discuss that ordinance and to enlighten the council as to the pros and cons that they feel are involved with that ordinance. And there will be more of a listening tour, again, for the council. I also pledge to get with the members of the public safety committee in short order in order to do another public safety committee meeting as soon as possible to talk about the citizens advisory council and also to add commentary about body cameras, either policy and/or information that people wish to share with this council. And again, I'll hopefully announce that at next week's meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be holding a meeting for citizens in the Trinity Gardens community this Thursday, June the fifteenth, starting at six o'clock. This meeting will be held at the Dutch Community Center. We have a vigorous agenda. We have presenters that's gonna be talking about jobs, and at all of our meetings, someone will be there talking about jobs. And we'll have someone talking about job training, in case we have citizens who don't have a job but need some training. Somebody will be there to talk about job train. We're gonna have someone there to talk about, it's gonna be Anitra Henderson, who is Director of Civic Engagement. She's gonna come and talk about our youth initiative we call YES. That is, they have created jobs for our young people for the summer. She's gonna come and tell us about that. I have invited members from the Police Citizens Advisory Council to come, to be present and talk with the citizens. We're gonna talk about our CIP program. We're gonna give an update on completed projects. We're gonna have a report, a public safety update on how we're doing in Trinity Gardens. And I have invited, I've asked Master Simpson to send a representative from his office to talk about, to answer questions regarding blight. Blight is an administrative matter, whether it's overgrown locks, junk cars, dilapidated houses, potholes, flooding, those are administrative matters reserved exclusively for the office of the mayor, and I'm not taking any hits. So I've asked the mayor to send a representative to the meeting to answer those, if not, I'm giving out his number. I'm telling you upfront, I'm not taking no hits now, over no blight. And before we close, we're gonna hear from the citizens. Whatever is on their heart, whatever they would like for me to do, that's what I usually do. I make sure that whatever I'm doing is what the citizens want me to do. I'm not guessing. Let the citizens tell me, and I leave there heading, going full speed ahead to do what the citizens want me to do. So looking forward to see all the citizens in the Trinity Gardens area, of course, I don't care where you're from, you can come, but this meeting is for the citizens in the Trinity Gardens community, looking forward to seeing you this Thursday. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Daves. Mr. Manzi?
No, no.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of announcements. Last night, I held a District Seven meeting at St. John's United Methodist Church on Overlook Road. Many thanks go out to Chief Batiste, Chief Godwin, to County Commissioner Connie Hudson, as well as Nick Amberger, who I don't think is in the audience today, and Don Powell with Aldott, too, who all provided information on many subjects ongoing in the district, primarily on the widening of Ziegler Boulevard. If you live anywhere near there, or that's part of your route, you've noticed that a lot of work is going on, there's a lot of netting around trees. What is happening right now is utilities work, all the different utilities, from Mobile Area Water and Sewer to Mobile Gas, and AT&amp;T, and on and on, are having to move their lines prior to construction taking place. So that's what you're seeing now, and once that is concluded, then we'll actually see some construction starting on Ziegler. Talking about high weeds and grass, yesterday I called in a report that Ziegler needs to be mowed. The weeds are knee-high and above, and there's a lot of litter. I called it in, and this morning on my way into work, I saw people out collecting the litter. So, fast response from our Public Works Department, thank you very much for that. We've announced this already, but it doesn't hurt to repeat it. June twenty-seventh, we will hold our last off-site meeting for this term. It will be at Burrows Elementary School at six o'clock, that's in District Four. So we invite everyone to come out for that, but we will hold our pre-conference meeting here at Government Plaza as usual. Over the weekend, Jim Rossler and I stopped by to visit with some residents in the Homeowners' Association of the Summer Place subdivision. They are doing some work over there, and the city is partnering with them on some cleanup projects. So we stopped in as they were doing a cleanup, and I just want to thank everyone at Summer Place for all the work that they are doing in making improvements in their neighborhood, and thanks to Jim for coming out on a Saturday. And also, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate in a panel at the Vision Center. If you don't know where the Vision Center is, it is the old Forest Hill Methodist Church, and it's on, it's right off of Forest Hill Drive on Princess Sand, Princeton Drive, rather. This was the Focal Point Leadership Seminar in Diversity and Leadership, and I just wanna thank everyone there for the opportunity to participate. One of my other co-panel members was our Municipal Judge Carlos Spindley. So, we had a very lively discussion and it was well-attended. I hope to see more of these coming up in the future. With that, unless there are any other announcements, or, George?
Just wanna, quick clarification, a statement was made that the mayor didn't take his photo with the Capale kids, I think...
Yeah, he did it outside.
He did out, prior to the meeting, did meet with them, as did, I think, several of the council members, if not all of you, and those photos are already on Facebook, and proud to have them there, just didn't wanna have any impression that he wasn't happy to do that.
Oh, right, yes, we all took photos prior to, to the meeting. All right, anybody else? Okay, with that then, we are returned.